Okay, good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM, October 20th, 2025. Before we get started here with the city council meeting that we're going to call to order here in just a second, I just want to let everybody know this is a good night to be here in person because the internet is down, not just here. There's, we don't know how far around town it's out, but the internet is down, so it's good you're here in person. It is recorded, so anybody who wants to see this, hear this meeting, they can call the clerk treasurer's office or, and get the recording if that's needed. So, anyway, with that being said, we will call the meeting to order. Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Austin?
Here.
Mr. Schuck?
Here.
Ms. McGinnis?
Here.
Ms. Nally?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brian Reese.
Invite you to join me in prayer. Our Father, we come before you this evening, and we thank you for your love and your mercy. We thank you tonight that as we gather in this room, Lord, you are in control of all things, and we trust that no matter what decisions are made, Lord, that you will lead and guide and help us, Lord, to, to live a life of thriving and peace and unity and love for one another. I pray that you be with all the items on the agenda tonight, be with the promotion that takes place. Thank you so much for our officers, and thank you so much for the work that they do to serve and protect us as we live here in this city. Continue to bless the work that they do. Bless the rest of the agenda items, give wisdom and discernment to our council as they consider these matters and make decisions that affect our lives. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Invite you to stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
All right, thank you. Under announcements and public comments tonight, we have Jacob Heine, who's been promoted to sergeant, and he's been performing that for a little while yet in that position, and we want to recognize him tonight for that promotion. So, we've got our leadership staff here with us, so thank you, guys, and come on up, Jacob.
Yeah. Next, stage eleven.
Okay. Thanks, I won't be late.
Yeah.
Before we present us, I want to say, thanks to Jacob for stepping, stepping up several months ago and taking this, these duties without paying. He's been serving for quite a while, so it's been a long time coming, it's well deserved, and we're blessed to have him as part of the administrative team, blessed to have all of his shiftmates here, so we're going to have them come down and take a photo also. We just wanted to say congratulations to you, Jacob, with your new shiny badges.
I want one of those shiny badges. I don't want to be too much about it.
(applause)
I didn't know that.
(inaudible).
Trying to get it as quick as possible, we don't want to come down here.
I have that a couple times, it's always teeth stuff.
Yes.
(laughter)
I thought you were trying to help the lighting.
I should make fun of these people.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're very much appreciated. Thank you. Are there any other announcements or public comments?
Yes.
That does not pertain to the agenda. Hearing none, we'll go on to consent agenda.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of October 6th, city council meeting is drawn up.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go on to old business.
Move to read old business by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read by title only. All those by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will go on to old business, which is a public hearing, approval of ordinance number 25-10, an ordinance implementing a fee for non-emergency response, responses and lift assistance at residential care facilities, city attorney lingering.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything additional to add. I have not received any comments either from the public and/or from any elected officials regarding this. This is simply to allow us to collect a fee for those responses where our fire department is sent in to provide a non-emergent or a non-emergency lift assist. We primarily, these are all only going to be related to our commercial entities. We will continue to assist our residents if that happens, but these are commercial entities that frankly have staff that are paid to do these things, but they're utilizing our services. My, I doubt that it will be a, a ordinance that will create much revenue because my sense is that when it's passed, then we will no longer get the calls that we now get because it's not a free service. So, it is ready for your action after a public hearing. Happy to answer any questions.
So, at this time, we'll open it up for public hearing. If anybody has any questions, comments in the public, feel free to come up to the mic.
Mayor and council, I hope we don't make a dime off this. I really hope that we can go and educate them as the fire department and get them to act the right way and take care of their people that pay to live there. So, thank you for your consideration of passing this, but I really hope that after we go and educate them a little bit more, that we can actually, this will just be an ordinance that sits out there and we never have to implement it.
And just, just, I just want to say this part of it. I'm not going to name the names, but there's one with three so far to year-to-date. There's a one with one, there's one with two, there's one with zero, there's one with one, one with zero, one with three, and then there is one with 57. So, I think the 57 is probably what drew attention to this, so that's where we're at.
Yeah. And maybe we can get fewer people falling. That would probably be the goal as well.
Mayor, chief, did you say educate them? Are you going to go out and educate them? Already has. Already has?
We've already spoke with the one that has the majority of it.
Mm-hmm.
And it did slack off for a while, and then...
Well, I remember that, but are you going back out to train them on lifting them, or is that, I know that's not your job, but...
Going to go back, once, if the ordinance passes tonight, we will go and meet with pres, Deputy Stark and I will go and talk to each individual, so there's not a fear that, oh, we're going to get charged as soon, the next time we call. So, we will go and, if the ordinance passes tonight, we will make appointments to go and speak with every extended care facility in the city.
So, you're going to educate them on the cost, not on how to lift?
We're going to try both, Todd.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. That sounds like a good plan.
Yep.
And then also, Todd, that it's a potentially a waivable fee as well, to the chief's recommendation.
Up to four, I reckon.
Potentially, there'd be no fee whatsoever.
Depending on the circumstances.
Absolutely.
Could be an issue, but...
I mean, good point, Mr. Austin. If they have a patient that weighs 600 pounds, and there's two or three people working there that maybe weigh up 200 pounds between the three of them, and they need assistance like that, I can understand that. So, they might just need some extra muscle, but it doesn't need to be every time somebody stumbles to give us a call. So, there is those circumstances that we would, yes, you're going to need help because...
Sure. Well, you're being taken away from other runs that need to be addressed.
Yeah. And every time we roll that machine out, it costs us money. I mean, it costs, there's no liability to us, then? What, for a lift assist? Well, there, there could be one, we're doing it now, but we're trained, we, as if I do the heavy lifting. Our public service officers are trained to do those types of things, and we have immunity for doing those types of things. But there is, anytime we roll the machines out, anytime we're on a call, we are creating liability for the city because we're out there. So, certainly, that's a, an ancillary issue. Great, great question. Just as a practical matter, Madam Clerk Treasurer, if, if the council does adopt this, we will have to publish it because it does include a fee for...
And Ms. Gray, I showed you earlier, since this has been the first reading of this, Lafayette has now decided they're moving on the start, so they'll be the, if we, if we become, they would be the fourth in the state. So, we're starting to see that this is a growing problem around places, and there, it just took that first one to get the ball rolling, now others are following suit.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, Chief is here. Okay, is there any other comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we will close public hearing, ready for action.
Move to approve ordinance 25-10.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll go on to item number two, which is also a public hearing, approval of budgetary ordinance 25-18, authorizing an additional appropriation into rainy day, FICA, PERF, and overtime to pay out the comp time and overtime. Thanks, that has been accrued. Clerk Treasurer Jan Jones.
Yeah, nothing to add, this is the new, last time, or the new thing that we're paying out comp and overtime at the end of the year, so in order to cover taxes for where we're at right now, we need to move this additional money along with the money to pay out.
Jen, can you give us a total again?
The last I checked, it was around $4.90 just for employee payout, so that obviously wouldn't include any of the PERF and FICA. That's why we have the extra hundred.
Thank you. That, that pay period for that?
We're making the last pay in November.
In November, okay. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up. Is there any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing nobody move, we will close the public hearing.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll go on to new business.
Move to read new business by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to read new business by title only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion of SBA 1 impacts, Mr. Jeff Peters, our financial advisor, who I, I think we all have a lot of trust in.
But we don't have the internet.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
We didn't have the money to pay our bills.
I was in my office, I didn't have the internet for the last couple hours. So, in Senate Bill 1, I would say this is the continuation of property tax caps. So, about 15 years ago, you know, legislature said, we want to cap 1%, 2%, and 3% property. You, as local units of government, are going to net-collect fewer dollars, and you'll have to figure out how to work that out. But they did give you, through the county, additional income tax options, which have been exercised over time. You've had your normal certified shares distribution and income tax that you have received since the probably mid-'70s, and then recently, the county imposed economic development income tax to give you some additional revenue. In the current piece of legislation, what it does is now limit property taxes further, and they've kind of done that in multiple different ways. One, for the 1% property, which are your homestead properties, they today have a standard deduction to the assessed value and then a supplemental deduction, which probably nets out to about 50% of the gross value of your homestead is actually net-taxable and part of your tax base. The new legislation implements replacing the supplemental with a bigger supplemental and doing away with the standard deduction between 2026 and 2031. And what it will do is drive down the value today to one-third of what the gross amount is. So, today, you're probably at about 50%. When they get done with this in 2031, all of that residential property will only be valued at 33 1/3% of what it is. On 2% property, which is long-term care facilities that you were just talking about, rental, residential, ag, those properties in that same time period are going to drop from 100% today to 2/3 of what it is. Then on the 3% business property, the legislation provides that for business personal property, today, if you have businesses that have $80,000 or less in acquisition value of that business personal property, they don't file a tax return. Therefore, that amount of property that they utilize is not included in your tax base. For pay 2027, that $80,000 threshold jumps to 2 million. So, there's going to be significant amounts of assessed value in business personal property that is no longer going to be part of your tax base. The other thing that they gave 3% property for is, or the 3% property tax breaks, is if you implement new personal property after January 1, 2025, it is no longer subject to a 30% floor. So, typically, what we had is different pools of property. You would invest in that free business, and it would depreciate on an accelerated scale, but if you were still using that property to generate income, it had a 30% floor. So, even if you could depreciate it below that, according to the schedules at the state, you still had to pay a minimum of 30%. They did away with that. So, although that may not be a problem today as people replace equipment, that's going to deteriorate your tax base again. So, property tax-wise, you have a maximum levy, as we've talked about before, that you will get to levy those finite dollars. If that assessed value is now less, all of your tax rates are going to go up. If all of your tax rates go up, there will be more properties that hit the 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps. So, today, on your maximum levy, because of the 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps, you don't collect about $2.4 million a year. So, potentially, that amount goes up. On top of that, the legislature said for homestead properties, we are going to provide them an additional 10% of their tax bill or $300, whichever is greater, and that's going to come right off of your tax collections again, which is going to be somewhere between $525,000 to $850,000 a year that you're now going to lose in property taxes. And why I say that amount, we did an original analysis to look at that. Our number was around 750, and the state came out with an estimate, their estimate was around 850, but I'm sure they're using some global assumptions, don't know what those are. But since that point in time, we have seen your assessed value come in now for pay 2026. It's up 12.6%. So, one of the opportunities, I think, for high-growth communities like you is that you may not be hit as hard as others that have stagnant assessed value growth, because if you can continue to outpace what your maximum levy grows by, which today is at like 4%, you can continue to drive down your rate, which then you'll have fewer properties qualifying for those 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps, and hopefully, it won't be as significant. But from the property tax side, we would anticipate there will be some impact. It'll be, you know, potentially, a few hundred thousand dollars a year that you're going to lose out from where you are currently. In addition to property taxes, the legislation has decided to completely revamp income taxes beginning in pay 2028. The legislation at current says that you can't act on that, and it doesn't become effective until July 1 of '27, and you'll have to act on it between July 1 of '27 and October 1 of '27 to set the income tax rates for 2028 to continue your revenue stream. They've also completely gone away from the distribution formulas that they've had in the past. What we always had in the past is the county would make those income tax decisions. Any revenue stream they created, outside of a couple like correctional facility for the jail, but almost all of those income tax revenue streams they created, they would have to statutorily share that proportionate with other units of government, and those distributions were always made based on the property taxes that you levied versus the property taxes levied by everybody else. Legislature now has decided, no, we're going to go away from that model, and we're going to go to population. And also, they're going to give you income tax authority for some of your income tax revenue to levy income taxes just on the people inside of Franklin. So, to kind of lay out the, the regime as it starts, for the county as a whole, they can implement, I'm proud to say this, the top income tax for all the combined rates, whether you're inside the city or outside the city, is 2.9%. The county can impose 1.2% countywide, they keep all of that money to themselves, and they get to utilize that revenue stream for all of their operations, and they have debt service, like on the jail project, that it's paid from income tax. They're going to utilize all those funds to make their debt service, do their operations, et cetera. And 1.2 countywide will be more than enough money than they will probably ever need as authority to bring in income taxes. They're not going to lose anything, it's just going to depend on how high they set it, and they will not set it probably at that 1.2 because they won't be able to utilize that much money at one time. Additionally, they can impose 0.4% countywide for fire and EMS. If they impose that 0.4, they have to share it mandatorily with any fire protection territory, fire protection district, or municipal fire department. So, any city or town that has a fire department, fire district, and fire territory, they would automatically get it. The county can also decide, and this is at the county council level, being the fiscal body, they can decide to also share it with any volunteer fire department and township fire department. Those distributions, once they set the pool as to how it's going to be shared, the distribution is by population and 20 times the square miles of their service area. What will happen and fall out is the larger cities that have the most population will get the biggest distributions. I'm hopeful that this won't be a problem in our county, but a lot of places around the state, cities and towns do not get along with the county, and the county will have to levy that tax on people for the majority of the proceeds to go to the cities and towns. In a lot of places, that's just not going to happen. They're going to say, you know, that's your problem, you're on your own. Additionally, the county has the option to impose income tax for the other units of government, townships, library, solid waste. They can do each of those at 0.05%. The total of the 1.2 they can issue, the 0.4 for fire and EMS, and the sum of all these 0.5s together can't equal more than 1.7. And this is where we're kind of getting to the 2.9. Additionally, the county can levy 1.2% income tax for all the small towns, so outside of any city or town that has a population of 3,500 or more, they can levy that income tax, and then the county can decide to keep 75% of that money if they want for things that benefit that whole group, and at a minimum, they have to share 25% with these towns that would be below 3,500 in population. All of those summed together can't equal more than 2.9. So, from the city side, where we get into the cities that have more than 3,500, you will be allowed to impose a tax of 1.2% on all of your people only inside the city of Franklin. Today, that data set does not exist. We don't know what the income tax base is for Franklin or anybody else because we've never had to collect that data. The legislation says that beginning in 2025, the Department of Revenue has to collect that data because they're going to have to build those data sets, so that when you get to make this decision in July through October of 2027, you have something to rely on. What we did for our analysis was to look at per capita income for Franklin versus the same data set of per capita income for the county and equalized it to the county-wide tax base, which we actually know. If we do that, we anticipate that the city's 1.2 would produce about $9.5 million in income taxes. Today, for certified shares, which is the base distribution that you've received since the beginning of income tax, is about $9.9 million. So, you potentially lose half a million dollars based on the certified shares that you bring into the general fund versus what we think you're going to be able to generate. Additionally, since the county imposed economic development income taxes, you get about $2.4 million a year. So, that puts you at about $12.3 million in total. If the county were to impose the 0.4 fire and EMS, it would generate, we think for you, about $4.4 million. So, you would be money ahead if they imposed the full 0.4. You would be at about $13.9 million versus 12.3. However, if the county decides not to impose that fire and EMS, which they're required to share it if they impose it, but they're not required to impose it. So, if that doesn't happen, you're going to be short about $2.8 million a year from where you're at today. The other thing, the legislation has the same timing for you as for the county. So, we're not going to know what the county is going to do, nor even the people who are going to be sitting in the seats to vote on it until mid-'27 potentially. The legislators that gave the final push before the bill was passed said, we know it's not perfect, we've got time to work on it, we can make revisions, and I think we'll see multiple revisions in both '26 and '27's legislative sessions. I would think more probably in '27 because it'll be a long session, so they'll actually get to get more done. That being said, there are a whole lot of unknowns and answers that aren't going to happen until probably the middle of '27. So, that being said, you know, we don't want to say the sky's falling because you've positioned yourself very well, and you're in a, a position where I think even if they didn't impose the income... into the general fund versus what we think you're going to be able to generate. Additionally, since the county imposed economic development income taxes, you get about $2.4 million a year. So that puts you at about $12.3 million in total. If the county were to impose the 0.4 fire and EMS, it would generate, we think for you, about $4.4 million. So you would be money ahead if they imposed the full 0.4. You would be at about $13.9 million versus $12.3. However, if the county decides not to impose that fire EMS, which they're required to share it if they impose it, but they're not required to impose it. So if that doesn't happen, you're going to be short about $2.8 million a year from where you're at today. The other thing, the legislation has the same timing for you as for the county. So we're not going to know what the county is going to do, nor even the people who are going to be sitting in the seats to vote on it until mid-'27 potentially. The legislators that gave the final push before the bill was passed said, we know it's not perfect, we've got time to work on it, we can make revisions, and I think we'll see multiple revisions in both '26 and '27's legislative sessions. I would think more probably in '27 because it'll be a long session, so they'll actually get to get more done. That being said, there are a whole lot of unknowns and answers that aren't going to happen until probably the middle of '27. So that being said, you know, we don't want to say the sky is falling because you've positioned yourself very well, and you're in a position where I think even if they didn't impose the income tax, your operations would probably be substantially the same, and you would just have to go back from the projects that you've been funding with economic development income tax and with cash on hand. You probably need to debt finance those going forward. other legislation regarding debt, all the existing, and we've talked about this before, those thresholds of controlled projects and general obligation bond caps and lease rental bonds, et cetera, all that stays in effect, but now they've also put in an overarching, basically it's a rate restriction. So as a city or a town, you will be able to hit all those other parameters, but if your debt service rate gets above 25% or above 25 cents per hundred dollars of AV, and you try to issue debt, you will automatically have to put that on a referendum and put it on the ballot. Now, today, you're only at, for 2026, I think you're going to be at about 2.67 cents. So you're a long way from that. I don't anticipate that you would get there, but just something to know as to that legislation. TIF districts and the RDC, because one of the things is, if we had additional tax rates because the assessed value is constrained, that would typically be good for redevelopment commission because the taxes that are imposed for the redevelopment commission and the TIF revenue is invisible to the taxpayer. It's just the entire revenue stream off of the incremental assessed value goes to the RDC as TIF. Because of the property assessment restrictions that were put in here and the potential for increased tax rates, the legislation directs the DLGF to neutralize out any windfall of TIF revenue that would go to redevelopment commissions. That being said, we haven't seen exactly how they're going to do that yet. Every year, we neutralize the base assessed value of the TIF district for any other appreciated value, so I think they'll do it similarly to that. That being said, if they do it correctly, any real development that you continue to have in your TIF districts, you know, when they build a new warehouse, all that should be increment above the base. So you still should be able to collect those and continue to have TIF revenue to do your projects. The other impact to the TIF districts, though, will be that threshold that jumps up to $2 million. I actually have a client, it's Beech Grove. They have a designated taxpayer that they collect revenue off of currently that has personal property below $2 million. When this goes into effect and pay '27, they're actually going to lose part of their TIF revenue stream because of that. Now, in your case, the only designated taxpayers you've attached and collected TIF on business personal property have been much larger than that. But that's another thing to think of when you talk to your legislators, you know, a lot of people wanted to get rid of that threshold altogether. So if they decide $2 million should really be $20 million or $200 million, then you're starting to get into your potential TIF revenues as you go forward. Also eliminating that 30% floor for business personal property could reduce some of your TIF revenues. And of course, if we have revenue lost to the city, that may increase demands on TIF revenues to be shared with the city. Legislature set up a few years ago that you can now use TIF monies for public safety expenses, and if we continue on this cycle, I could see potentially the city might go to the redevelopment commission and say, hey, you know, we need you to pay for X, Y, and Z, one, because you can, and two, because we've lost this other revenue. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I know that's a lot.
Any interest in running for the legislature yet?
Ever.
Okay. So if we lose our 0.04 because the county elects not to, and understand why, if they're not going to get it, we're losing how much?
2.4. I think you would lose about 2.8 million a year. So that would completely wipe out the edit money that you've gotten for the last few years and another 400, 500,000.
Yep, okay.
And you're going to lose another potentially 500,000 to 800,000 in property tax receipts because of the credits.
And I'm sure prices are going to stay the same.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff, real quick, you and I had a conversation on the best way to finance our sports park down the road, and I know it's probably too early, you were going to look into that, but we talked about TIF and park bond and different ways to do that. Do you want to touch on that just a little bit?
Yeah. One of the things that the legislation did too is it says now, where before, when local income taxes were imposed, they stayed imposed until you rescinded them or altered them. And if you pledged them to bond payments, you could not reduce them because they were the security for the bonds. Legislation now says, no, every year, the county council will have to positively reaffirm what the income tax rates are for everything. You know, we know what will happen politically. At some point in time, a majority of people will run and say, we're going to lower your income taxes. And they'll come in and they'll lower their income taxes until they realize what happened a year or two later and all the cash is gone. The rating agencies see that, the bond market sees that. So now, we can't really issue income tax bonds. So everything is going to be structured at this point in time. I hear that is one of the things to be changed in the '26 session, is they're going to go back to allowing that to be imposed until rescinded. But at this point in time, if we issue any bonds, what we're doing is using property tax as the base security for the bonds. Again, we used to pledge property tax as a backup anyway, just to get a better bond rating and lower interest rates. It'll be the frontline pledge, and what you can do is then decide alternatively that you could pay it back with income tax or with TIF revenue, whatever it is you want to do as part of your funding model if you have enough funds to do that. So assuming that we are heading forward with Park Project, I would say that these will be property tax secured, and the language will include options that you can utilize TIF if you want. So if you want to buy down the property tax rate, you can pledge some TIF revenue. You could also pledge income tax, although as we talked about, income tax potentially is going to be shorted, and we won't know for a couple of years. But you will have that option as fiscal body year to year to decide how much it is you want to put on the property tax rolls versus how you want to fund that through other revenue sources.
And that can be adjusted every year?
Every year, you can decide, yes.
Okay. Interesting.
And same for the county, right? You said when the county council, their decision for what they're doing, that then affects us year by year.
It could. That's assuming that they implement something that will benefit you. Again, they don't have to, they can sit on their hands and just bring in enough for them. The other thing they can do, there's a, I believe it's section 142 of the statute, it says that any unit of government can share its income tax revenue stream with any other governmental entity in the county for their purpose or for a joint purpose. And under that, as the way I read it, I think the county could impose a slightly larger amount under their part because, again, they're never going to need, or presently, I can't see that they'll need 1.2%, but if they generated a little bit more on their side, they could probably say, oh, we're going to pay this for our fire districts that they're responsible for, and specifically not share it with the cities and towns. So it, you know, again, as you're talking to people lobbying for that, you need to lobby the county council to get you a distribution. And on the legislative side, I think there's kind of two ways, you know, it could go. If you want to have total control as a city fiscal body, you'll need a higher rate than 1.2 in order to generate all your own money, but you'll be only generating it off of the people inside the city of Franklin. Or have them make the 0.4 or whatever that amount for fire and EMS to be mandatory that they implement it and share it accordingly. You know, it kind of makes sense that you would have fire and EMS countywide, and the bulk go to the cities and towns because how many out-of-city responses do you have for public safety or for fire and EMS? You know, I think that part of it was well thought out, it's just the implementation of giving them the option creates a lot of problems for you.
Gives them a lot of power.
Yes.
Well, particularly if they don't cooperate with everybody. If everybody doesn't play well together, it's going to hurt.
That's my point.
And one other question or comment, just to clarify, that if, today, if you live in Franklin, your income tax, no matter where you work, it comes to Franklin, or it goes to where you live. But whenever you, the income tax will start, if somebody's working in Franklin and they live in Columbus, it will go to Columbus, correct? And if somebody is working in Columbus and lives in Franklin, it will come to Franklin?
Yes, wherever you live is where your local income tax will be paid to.
And it's not that way today, correct?
Well, it is, but it's a bigger pool. Like today, all of us that live in Johnson County, we pay into a countywide pool. That will be subdivided under this new legislation. So there will be a countywide pool, a Greenwood pool, a Franklin pool, a countywide pool excluding the cities and towns that are above 3,500. So there will be multiple pools now. And you'll pull from, obviously, the Franklin pool, you don't share, you'll have all of those funds, but you will share based on the countywide pool if they impose something that you get share from, being like fire and EMS.
Wow. What does that look like for us compared to, I mean, maybe you don't have this information, but if we, if it does get broken down, then if we are dividing it between Greenwood, Edinburgh...
That's what I did for the 0.4. I split it as if it would be shared countywide completely. So this would be your smallest distribution because it would be shared on the widest basis. If it's 0.4, you would get about $4.4 million a year. That would put you, today, where you get both certified shares and economic development of about 12.3, that would put you at about 13.9. So you would be much better off.
So if we're better off there, the income tax would be, we can be less, or not at all, is that correct?
Yes, you could lower your 1.2 to a smaller amount if you just wanted to net it out to get even from where you are. Which, again, then you have to figure out, when is the county going to adopt versus when you can adopt, you know? Yeah, if they went July 15th, that would give you lots of time to alter yours and edit yours.
Okay. A lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts.
And it'll change next session.
Yes, and the one after that, and like I say, the one after that, I think there will be a lot of changes. So being, it'll, the legislative session will let out late, and you'll act between July 1 and October 1, will have to go through a lot of iterations probably to get you the information you need to make a good decision.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Not at all, Sean?
Nothing. Can't wait to '27, though.
All right. Any, okay, hearing none. Thank you, Jeff, for coming tonight.
Thank you. Take care.
All right. We'll go on to item number two, which is introduction, and it says approval to vacate the drainage easement at Knollwood Drainage Easement Vacation Introduction. Kingsbridge developer David Marks and Joanna, I think, is going to maybe speak for David.
Just to give some sort of introduction of what the request is this evening, or introduction of the ordinance. Indiana Code states that when there is a drainage or utility easement that has been recorded, in order to vacate that, it has to go through a process of where it first goes to the Board of Works for a recommendation to be forwarded to city council. Following that recommendation, an ordinance is presented to city council, which is what we're doing right now, as an introduction. And then the public hearing is set for, actually, November 3rd, and that would be when official action is taken. The purposes of the vacation process is, for a vacation process, is the state and municipalities don't want where somebody can come in and just remove an easement. There has to be a process and oversight. In this particular case, with Kingsbridge, the Knollwood Farms detention pond, at the time that it was developed, needed to outlet to Brewer Ditch. So at that time, an easement was obtained to take that pipe and outlet across, under the farm field to outlet into Brewer Ditch. With the development of Kingsbridge, the current location of that pipe is in conflict with a number of improvements, one of them being our park improvements. So what we're doing is going through the process to vacate the easement, but in return, with the recording of the secondary plats, is where a new easement is created and where the new infrastructure is then installed. And so the Knollwood Pond still functions the way it's supposed to. This easement's vacated, that new easement is created. And we have this timed that this process for vacating coincides with the plat coming before the Board of Works for acceptance. That way, they can run together where the easement can be vacated and immediately replaced. And David's here with any questions that you'd have for engineering logistics of the pond itself.
Well, new definition of vacation, isn't it?
Want to talk about the Board of Works?
Yeah, the Board of Works did give a favorable recommendation because it's basically given up.
Just switching.
Yeah, it'll be a better functioning ditch at this point in time.
So any questions for David? I don't know if he'll come back to the next meeting or not. Will be, okay.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, so any questions? Hearing, hearing none, it's been introduced. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it. Okay, next item. Permission to line item transfer, $27,000 from Fire 200 and Fire 400 to Fire 300 to cover professional services expenses for the remainder of 2025. Fire Chief Josh Snyder, and we can act on this tonight because it is budgeted money that's there.
Right, sorry, been appropriated, right.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'm just asking to move $10,000 from my 200 series, $17,000 from my 400 series to, for a total of $27,000 to my 300 series.
Any questions for Josh? If not, then we're ready to act.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll go on to the last item, the 2026 meeting dates. There is two Wednesdays, one Tuesday, and the reason we go to the Wednesdays and the Tuesdays, it sometimes conflicts with the fire or police merit and with the planning commission, so we go to the next available date, that's why we're there. That gives us two meetings a month, the same thing we've been doing for several years now. We didn't change the times. We talked about, should we change the time to start city council as soon as Board of Works is over, but we found it to be that there's probably, it's more convenient and more understanding for the public to stay where we're at. So we do need approval for this one.
Both the dates and the times, and what we'll do is we'll provide this to the Daily Journal so that they can publish it, and we will met our open door requirements, so if you'll prove the date and time.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
I said aye. Well, thank you. Do that sometimes. All right, other business, there isn't any. We'll go into council member comments, and we'll start with council member from the mayor's youth council, Rose Mayhem.
Starting over here.
Yeah.
I'm Rose. Tonight, we have Marnie, Lily, Olivia, Callie, and Anna Kate here. This week, we are collecting peanut butter and jelly for the inner church food pantry. We are also cleaning their box truck on October 25th. And then our large project this year is dog water bowls across the paths downtown. So we're continuing to look for locations and budgeting. So we're working with Chip Ordner from the Parks Department and figuring out fundraising with maybe a walkathon.
Thank you, Rose. Good job. Jennifer?
Nothing, thank you.
Irene?
No, nothing for me.
Todd?
Nothing, sir.
Just give a shout out to the girls volleyball team. Since we have three members here, they won sectionals this weekend and
Ah, good job.
And then going to regionals this week. So Callie, Anna Kate, Rose, they're all members of the team, so.
Good job. Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, Sean. Ken?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Ann?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Josh?
I just want to give kudos to the mayor's youth council for the lights at the Pep Hall Court. I don't know if anybody sees or noticed that that place is used all hours of the day and evening. I go over the jacks in the mornings a lot of times, and there are people there using the lights, playing.
All right.
And they're there, so, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Great addition.
Jan, do you have anything? Lynn?
The only thing I would say, thank you to the youth council for the EV stations. I had somebody stop in the office today who was all worried about where they could charge their vehicle, and I said, well, right over there. They were much appreciated and they are used, so.
Awesome. Thank you. And I have nothing to say. I appreciate all of our employees and the hard work that they do. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.